Oh, that's that. That was up on West Street that we're taking. That's Agress Street. Apparently, they bought it.
No.
I have a hard copy out for you, your agenda?
You did?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got the agenda.
Okay. Oh.
Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. By the way, we got a full house tonight. Welcome. Darcy, if you'd call the roll, please.
Moore, Mar, Moody, Instrom, Engelhardt.
Thank you. Item three is the pledge allegiance. Everybody that's able, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four then is perfection and approval of the agenda. Is there a motion for that, please? Lori? Mary, all those in favor say aye. Those who say no, care. All right, item five is public comment time. And if you please come up to the podium and tell us your name, please, because we are broadcasting. Pull the microphone in, please.
Good evening. My name is Father Martin Foolidge. I'm the pastor here at St. Bridges Catholic Church in Postville since 2022. And I'm here today because I'm concerned about the safety of our community, specifically the safety of Postville families living in rental housing. I did submit a request to be added to the this agenda with this concern. It was not added, so I'd like to take this public comment opportunity to share with you my concern that others in the community have as well, in hopes the city starting a regular inspection process for rental properties for the good of Postville and its residents. And I hope this may encourage one of you to make this agenda out of the log. Just want to share a brief story. A young family came. This is uncommon for us, as a church, other churches in the community. Came for rental assistance. We helped them. However, they were struggling to live with multiple families renting the same house, one family per room. And sometimes a different family that did not know would just show up because the landlord allowed it. The landlord would increase the rent without any certain contract agreement. And they expressed to me many very bad sanitary conditions with so many families living together and deteriorating property on the rental place. I believe this and other incidents I've encountered were not isolated and more widespread. I did talk to the Postville Police Department about this. They told me this was a city issue since that kind of falls under rental property issues inspections. So another reason I'm here today. I'd like to pass up to you a packet of information that I'm not going to take a long time to go through. And of course, I don't have much time, but just for your continued review and look, and will guide some of my comments. If you would please pass them down. Thank you so much. The very first page is just an overview of what I want to cover briefly. The next page on the inside, I know it's still being passed out, but it's a letter from Pastor Lynn Noel from a Lutheran church, St. Alzitown. Another faith leader expressing some similar concerns. So I'll let you read that at your leisure. The next page, if we go to page three on there, it just looks at the difference between Waukesha and Postville, specifically in rental property, housing, dollar ranges. We know we have many families in even Postville, and we have like zero rental properties available that have zero to five dollar ranges. We know we have many families in here in Postville. The next page, third page, page four, is section eight rental properties, like inspection policies and guidelines from Upper Iowa Explorer Land. They're a great agency that maybe could offer some help with this for regular inspections every one to three years. The next page after that contains recommendations from the Iowa League of Cities for rental housing codes inspections, such as a three-year cycle, to cover all rental properties. The next page looks at smoke detectors. I do have concerns with houses I've seen and visited for parishioners, and that these are being properly in place and functioning. After that are the Postville City plans and inspections that I did see is at the time of the second one there, they'll transfer the legal title, which I do bring up again and hope that this is happening. And the next page after that concerning smoke detectors again in our Postville City code. Again, I bring this up in hope that this item is being properly inspected. The next two pages in the package deal with safety concerns to the rental buildings, including sanitary conditions, lead-based paint, stairs, rails, and porches, which I've seen and heard from people that comes to us as a parish may not be up to code and would benefit from a regular inspection program. The final two pages of the package, and to the end, include a city map laid out in sections detailing how a regular rental property inspection program could function well in Postville to cover all properties in the city over the next four years. Because I know we, yeah, we don't have the resources and it's not feasible to do in one year. And then a list of names of certified public inspectors that could be used for such a program that has shown for us elsewhere. I just thank you for your listening and for your work for our Postville community. And considering this on the next agenda to benefit our community, our families living in rental properties for their safety. God bless all of you.
Thank you, Father.
Good evening. My name is Martin Oring, and I appreciate the chance to meet with you this evening. As a fellow city council member of a small town, I understand that cities are sometimes fraught with tough decisions. I'm here to request that you consider passing an ordinance that mandates regular inspections of all rental properties to ensure they meet basic safety standards for tenants. I serve as the outreach director for Northeast Iowa Community Action Corporation, which operates ten outreach offices across seven counties, including one here in Postville. We offer many services that provide the support and resources to improve the stability and quality of life for individuals and families with limited resources. In Postville, we've encountered reports of unsafe and inadequate living conditions in rental properties. These include issues such as floors and walls with holes in them, exposed lead-based paint, collapsing ceilings, broken and missing window glass, and infestations of cockroaches and rodents in the hallways and homes. Our staff, who will share their experience later, witnessed these conditions firsthand in their weekly home visits as early head start of the home visitors. And when our family service staff engage in families for various programs. I urge the council to adopt an ordinance that mandates regular inspections of all rental properties to ensure their safety, along with fines and penalties for landlords who fail to comply. This would encourage landlords to prioritize necessary repairs rather than happen to their clients. By passing such an ordinance, you will enhance the city of Postville by improving the living conditions of its residents, making the city more appealing to investors than those seeking new homes. Furthermore, ensuring the safety of rental properties will increase their value, contributing to a larger tax base and increased revenue for the city itself. Thank you for allowing me time to speak tonight. I kindly request that this be included in the official transcript of tonight's meeting.
Good evening. My name is Blanca Schreider. I am home visitor. I work for Community Action Early Care Start. And like a home visitor, I visit the families. And I can see the situations that many houses and apartments have. Like Martin said, there are many issues, but especially the issue I would like to talk is the lead. We start to count more cases with children that have high lead poisoning. I can give you the next slide. You can see what happened, why we have to be concerned. Because lead poisoning can cause headaches, stomach aches, learning disabilities, decreasing growth and impaired hearing, as well as damage to other vital organs within the body. And the other, and the other slides that I gave you, they add that can have brain damage. So lead is being one, one issue, serious issue. So I am here to ask you to have an ordinance that regulate, that have an inspector that check everything in the houses. The people don't have money to, because they see any problem, you move to another house, there is no house for rent. And they don't have the money to give the deposit. So it's not easy. People have to live in this way. So please pass an ordinance that you have an inspector that regularly start to check on the buildings. So beside the crooked, some of these sort of problems, lead poisoning is something that we have to face. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am the family service specialist for Northeast Iowa Community Action for Postville Office. I am concerned about the living conditions for some families in our communities. I go to the homes for work and also speed up them with many families in the, in the community. I have seen and hear that the rentals are unsafe to live in, and they are not inspected. Many homes do not have fire alarms. Windows are covered with the thin plastic during the winter, or wood or no glass. Many homes also had cucarachas and mints and holes in walls, floors and ceilings. I would really appreciate your help so that these properties can be inspected and the rental properties made safer for families to live in. As many can not buy a home are are not forced to rent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rachel Sandhorse, and I am the school counselor at the Corby Darling at the elementary school. I'm a proud pirate. I love working at the elementary school. I love working in this community. And I full on am excited for school to start in August. Maybe not all my students yet, but. As the counselor, I do many things and including working with many of the people in, in this room and who have already spoken. And one, one thing I do is work with community action to help families find resources such as housing and food banks and rent assistance. I have noticed over the years that I've been here that our students do better academically, socially, and emotionally when they have decent, stable, and well-maintained housing. Additionally, parents are less worried and children are more at ease when their, when their housing is, when they have good housing. I mean, so I'm here to ask you tonight to consider how good housing policies can positively affect families and children in this community. Specifically, as you've heard, policies for yearly inspections can really ensure that our students will have the opportunity to learn and thrive. Thank you for your service, for what you do for Postville, for this community, making a great place for our students to live.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thanks for the comments. And we will, we will put this on the agenda for next month. This kind of caught us off a little bit off guard. There is policies in force right now, but we'll, we'll look at those and I, and we will, we will go forward with something. Now that it's completely been brought to our attention. So we'll work at that. All right. Thanks, you guys. That's very important. Okay, let's go then to item six. Anything else in front of the community? Not, okay, we'll go on to item six is Mr., oh, yeah, Bob, yeah.
My name is Bob Trader. I've lived here since nineteen sixty-two. And my concern is every month when I get my bill from the city, a sewer charge. I know that we are, whether you know it or not, we are paying for every star's wastewater facility up there, and I don't think that's right. When it comes out of your sewer bill, you pay to the cities every single month. And I'd like to ask the city if it's time that we terminate that agreement. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Nothing else then. Item six is Mr. Ben Garrett. Come on up now.
Good evening. I'm, I'm happy. First of all, my name is Ben Garrett of Tilden County Partners. You've got to be nobody ears to see me in the audience. And I was probably never happy personally starting on this. But I, I think all of you on council have a handout, you know. I had to come and address the council months ago and had a, you know, sort of had an discussion about what you want to do with your property in the south side of town and implementing a plan to build a new housing. And the, the sheet I handed out was just kind of a broad brush summary that, you know, I hope we can formulate in some sort of contractual arrangement. And, you know, I think it's hard to say, okay, it's going to be X, because there's many different ways that this, you know, site can be developed. And it's going to involve, you know, engagement with council and the community. And so it'll be a collaborative approach, but I would appreciate the opportunity to work with you and hope that this could be put into some sort of agreement that we, you know, we could come to terms, maybe working with city staff over the next month and have some sort of contractual arrangement. I would propose, based on sort of not knowing what this all might entail, you know, just letting you assess the community and make sure we're, we're doing, I mean, ultimately for this to be successful, it has to be what the community wants. And of course, at the direction of council. And I would say, I would suggest, it'll also involve engineering, legal, the whole sort of team put together. And I guess for lack of better terms, you know, have a sort of quarterback process, which is my background, have a finance real estate degree, an advanced commercial investment designation. So I would propose this sort of works as the framework if we can put together some sort of contractual arrangement. I would say we would, in my mind, there's not too exceed, you know, because there needs to be deliverables, you know, what are you getting for, you know, your investment? And that's also going to involve, like I said, engineers, you know, landscape design, legal, et cetera, to better understand. But I didn't really have any prepared remarks, but happy to answer any questions you might have. I mean, development, it's a long process. I know that very well. But I think there's ways we can move the ball forward and get us closer to a project. And I mean, part of that, I do have a finance degree, so I'm, I'm happy to help facilitate. And it's probably going to be a phase project because it's heavy. And I think that's going to be an important piece of the puzzle to be, you know, we put together a big plan that costs too much money. It never happens. And I have no interest in it. So I'm going to do something that benefits the community. And I think getting input from stakeholders, you know, some of which in this room, many of which in this room, which I think is important.
Any questions for Ben? I had, I've, I've been talking, we talk once in a while, Ben and I. And it's like, so this is, I believe, the third year we're heading into where we bought this property. And for the last two years, this property has been rented out. And so this year that ended. We went, we seeded it down. So my vision is we don't let this thing set idle, because when we let things set idle, it ends. So if we get, and that's, this is where Ben comes in, and you know, he's outlined a process of what he's looking at. I think this is exactly, you know, we sat here, we're, we're, we're council people and mayor, that we're far from being anything as far as the developer. So we need the help.
And, yeah. Well, and I personally like the approach of I have deliverables and I deliver them onto the next phase. Or if you choose to fire me, that's, you know, honor, you know. So, and I, I think that just, that's good for everybody. It has to be a great working relationship. I mean, I have, I feel confident I have the skill set to make this happen and help the community do it in a productive way that's, you know, benefits everyone. And I appreciate that.
What would be the next step to you'd have to have him draft so that you could look at it if you want that?
Our city attorney?
Well, he would probably bring us, bring a proposal to them, right?
Sure.
And he would review it and probably send it to our city attorney. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would be, is that kind of our wish as you guys to have, yeah. No, 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 so, yeah.
I just reached out to comments tonight, you know, we're lacking additional housing beyond what the complaint did.
Sure. Well, and I think for a community this size, I mean, thirty acres has to solve all the problems. But I think giving an assessment of the entire community is very beneficial, because that helps, you know, gives you information and arms you with, you know, making better decisions on some of the issues.
Exactly. My thought might be totally different from any of any else sitting out there. So that's what it takes. It takes.
Right. And that's why getting, you know, people to table and people in the room and having a discussion, I think, you know, everybody's going to learn something and get the best result at the end of the day.
Right.
Yes, that would be the goal. So I'd have something that we could go back and forth with, you know, make sure, I'll probably have my attorney, you know, to review something. Yeah, the goal would be to start engagement in the next month and then be starting again.
Sounds good, Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then, item seven then is the water tower lease agreement. That's with the radio station. Darcy, you want to? Are you ready or I can talk a little bit? Okay, so we, we sat, Darcy and I and Zach sat in with a meeting here a couple of weeks ago with the K, what was KPVL?
No, it was.
What was K? Or radio KPVL, yeah, something. Anyway, so that got, that got sold. And the equipment is still on top of our water tower. And so a, a Christian radio company bought this. And they're, what they want to do is broadcast, you know, start this, start this radio station up again as a Christian radio station. And so from my recollection of this meeting, it was like, you know, so you, there's not a lot of frequencies out there. You got to have somebody almost quit or sell out to get this space. So, so this is the deal that they got this space and they would like to keep renting the space on top of the water tower. That, that equipment's going to stay. They're going to upgrade some of the equipment that's in there. There's a little shed underneath the water tower, and they're going to upgrade that. And we had discussed, you know, price and and utilities. We found out that the previous one, the previous owner had, he paid the city $200 a month rent. And then we found out that the, we paid the light bill. And the light bill was running about 500. So, you know, so we're, we were moving backward on that. And so what's going to happen here, that, that radio station will be metered separate, so, and they're going to pay the light bill. And their proposal is 300 a month, but they pay the light bill. Anything else, Darcy?
That's pretty much it.
I got her. Okay. I'm sure there's lots of questions from everybody, but I guess that's kind of it in a nutshell. So you have to, you know, think if that's enough money, you know, for a monthly rent? If you want to, if you even want to get into a contractual with these folks, that's your job.
Well, we have the stuff there, and we can make money off of it. I feel like we should.
Yeah, that's, that's a little different. Yeah, yeah.
I was looking a little bit into the lab. It said basically that there's no public database that we can compare lease rates because of privacy issues with different contracts. But what I was reading was is that the average rates in America as a whole are between 400 and 1800 a month. But that the new leases in rural areas started 500 a month, just on average.
Okay.
So, and then existing leases, leases are higher than that. I mean, 300 is what they offered.
Yes.
So they have a premium.
That's still there. Yep.
Mike, are they expecting to reach a large audience? I mean, does radio equipment have like, you can go this far or can it just go on?
It's like this, this area right here, this, I, I, every once in a while, I don't, I'm not meaning this to be funny. But when I mow my lawn, you know, I put on some earphones with the radio on. And every once in a while, for some reason, I pick up this radio station. And I don't have a big lawn, but by the time I got from one end of the lawn to the other side of the lawn, I lost the signal. So it's not like, it's, it's not, it's not. And I think, I think the comment was made in, in this fellow's comments that he said, well, you know, for the area that we're buying or renting, he said, that's kind of all we can really pay, because it isn't really out that far.
He said that they consider it to be a reasonable rate based on coverage on the station.
Yeah, there you go, yeah.
He also, we also have to be based on what his neighborhood needs are, obviously, it's for helping his needs.
Yes, sure. Yep.
I mean, if it's worth it for them to pay the $500 electric bill for you to do it in your, well, I mean, that's his need.
Sure, you bet. So Devor, are you thinking a different?
Well, I don't have a number, but I, I, I just think that so it's 300 plus, still 500?
Well, whatever utilities are, they, they will be metered separate.
But they have been 500 or?
That's what they figured the average was, yeah. City of Postville, right?
No.
No, we would have a separate meter that they would pay that, we had gotten them a quote to have done, and they would pay that.
They'll pay $800.
We don't know what their utilities.
So the only thing you would know, Mary, is what you request for the rent. And we don't know utilities. I, I'm thinking, it sounded like they were going to replace some of that equipment. And it's supposed to be, the new stuff is supposed to be. Yes. So anyway.
And they are paying the current rent?
There was.
Nothing's being paid right now. Based, the, the person that did, was paying the 200, sold it to them. So there's been no.
I said I pulled the lawsuit. They don't have any, like, documents here. So there's something going on here.
Yeah, she's having trouble with her.
I guess I kind of agree with Devor, you know. If it's something they need, they can't build a duplicate for that little amount. If it's something they need, they can't build a duplicate for that little a month. We're not making a killing on it, but we already have the infrastructure there for them. The meter would be there. The tower's already there. If they put equipment in, it's for their needs, their needs alone. So, but we're kind of providing the big tall thing.
Yeah, you bet. The thing that's the thing he needs. Yeah.
Maybe we split the difference. If five is average and three is offered, offer, I'll go with four. I don't know. I mean, and have it as a how many year contract and it be reviewed.
How much does Verizon pay us for their 5G?
Uh, that's US Cellular and they pay 770 a month.
And is, is this tower that they'd be renting this radio, is it 5G capable?
I'm not sure. It's a radio. It's not a cell.
It's a frequency?
No, it's FM.
Oh, yeah, cell towers.
So.
I would make a motion, I guess, for $400 a month with a two or three year contract. To be re, you know, reviewed then.
Two or three, which?
I know, you're making me, um, say, say two. To review and renegotiate at that time.
Plus some pain utility?
Plus some pain, yes, definitely. Them having the metered utility is in their name and being fully responsible for it.
All right, there's been a motion. Everybody hear the motion? Standards are second.
Discussion?
Yeah.
Who's gonna be responsible if somebody falls off the power when you're up there working on it?
Yeah.
Oh, they gotta have insurance spot.
You could add my motion with the contract that agreed to be fully liable for that.
Well, it's in here.
It's already in the contract.
It's, it's in, yeah. All right. Any more questions? Not all those in favor, say aye. Or say no. Okay, here. Okay, then we'll go on to item eight, uh, library accounts. Yeah.
No, I don't. Unless you wanna talk, you can. Okay, um, so you saw in your packet that we are switching our accounting software. We're in the process of making that change from G-Works to the Banyan software for our payroll and fund accounting. And, um, with doing so, we need to come up with a different way of our, dealing with our library accounts because currently they have their own checking. And it's too difficult to separate that all out and co, cost of it um, in the software that we now have. So it would be a benefit to the library and the city if we merge their accounts into the city's accounts, ear tagged library, like we do every department, and we pay their bills out of the city's account. They would have to, the board would have to prepare their claims. They would, the bills would have to be submitted to the city for payment. And then the city would issue the checks. And right now, the library does all that. And then Crystal has to bring me her financials, which we have to balance every month. Um, this would automatically put it all into our system and be easier to reconcile.
And this is how the state library recommends the deal as well?
Yeah.
So what Darcy would like to know would be forward is what the state library suggests.
So I'm just wanting to make sure you are in agreement with that and understand that and give me permission to close those accounts because I need that for the bank to close the accounts. Um, those are in a different bank where this is all in fidelity. The pool and the hometown are in the other bank. So I have two banks, see, and now I, I need to merge it.
You need to merge it because of this new software?
Right, right. And I need to merge it. And it's, we actually get talked to every year by our auditor because it's not normal for a library to be writing their own checks and doing their own financial. Um, so this would kind of clean that up, that it's coming back under the city.
So what it's, does it kick just down?
Yep, I just need a motion to get, so it's in the minutes.
I would make a motion to merge the library account into the city's for keeping purposes or lettering, whatever, before we were going to read it. Is that the right order?
Um, how about close libraries' accounts and merge into city account ear tagged for library? Does that help? Okay.
That's exactly, you took the words right out of my mouth.
Is there a second? Mary? Any further special? Not all those in favor, say aye. Or say no. All right, that takes us to item nine and plans and specifications for the sidewalk proj, project.
All right, so I had emailed you the sidewalk plans and specifications from Erdman and it was kind of a big file and maybe that's why some of you crashed when trying to get your packet. I do have those here. Um, but I did give you the notes from the engineer so that you could kind of see um, things that he's working on and where he's at. So, um, tonight I'm looking for you to approve the plans and specifications, um, and send notice to paper to go out for bid. And we're looking at, um, going out for bid here at, well, your August meeting. And then, um, we're looking at a September start date with a completion date of October 31st and a fin, final November 14th.
I see last month, I think Larry was talking about, speaking to, um, Mr. about using the rocks that we practice.
Yep, we talked about that and, um, to make it an even playing field for when we're going out for bid, we would just have them bid the dirt. But then this, once the winning bid, the city would negotiate with that contractor our dirt because we don't know if we've got sufficient amount to do the entire project. Yeah, so that's something we'll talk with the awarded bidder. Yeah.
And this is the sidewalk out?
Running out to the development, yeah.
Well, that's my, that's done.
Well, we've been working on it, so. And it helps that we borrowed the money.
We have the money.
That we have the money, so, yeah.
Hopefully we can, you know, and when this goes out for bid, it even comes in a little over yet and that'd be all right. But, but anyway, so, yeah, so we need a motion to, uh, for resolution 1467 dash 25.
I vote, uh, we do a resolution 1467 dash 25.
Is there a second? Whenever you're ready, Darcy.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yeah.
Thank you. That, um, so there's a project, you guys, if you haven't been keeping track, that we've been working on. And that's to build a sidewalk out to Roca out there and, uh, it's been, I don't know how we got by all this time without people getting very, very hurt. And, uh, now they'll, hopefully by the, the end of fall, we'll, they'll have a sidewalk to come, come into town. So, yeah. So there we go. Okay, this, we got, item 11 is, uh, 111, 111 East. Oh, I'm sorry, number 10. I'm sorry, yes. Uh, Friends of the Library Group. Crystal?
Well, I'm not the one telling it, so.
Oh.
Oh. Well, I'll just, you fill in what I missed, okay? Um, well, uh, we have a librarian that has a million ideas, but she has this much money. And so some of us decided to, uh, do, uh, start a Friends of the Library Postville group, uh, and I've been working with Ericson on the bylaws and those are ready to go. And then we'll do a 503C thing. Nick's gonna do that for us, too. And then, um, we'll be ready to, uh, have a Friends of the Library group, like a lot, several other towns around here have. Uh, we can fundraise and get funds for the library and, um, with that 503 thing, uh, we're also able to, um, apply for grants and get them. So, um, and Crystal's a good grant writer, so we have high expectations. Uh, so, um, that's what we're working on.
So who's in the group?
Um, well, right now, board, we just had a board that we kind of made up the bylaws. So, um, me and C.C. Wheeler and Terry Quofer and Beth Snicker couldn't come to the first meeting, um, and then Julie Hyden.
So quite a few board members?
Yes.
Okay.
Should we try any more non-board members?
Well, you're, you just don't wanna have a conflict. So you've got a city council member and you've got several board members.
Right.
You can't, that all has to be separate. So you don't wanna have any conflict amongst the group and the board.
Right. Uh, are Beth, is Terry on?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Um, I don't think that's.
No.
All right. Um, yes, we got a group together and I did read all of Dan Morgan's things about which, what things I have to avoid and what things the.
Your board would have to.
And we can work around that, but, uh, I just asked people that I knew were interested in this to get something going. And then as we get all these things in line, then we're going to open it up to the public to, uh, and hopefully get some board members and have an election and get some officers.
Maybe some of the folks in this room right now. Uh, we're really excited about it, obviously. It helps bring in more people for us. We know the city does not have unlimited funding, so, um, but we really struggle with the funding, so.
Yes, yeah. Now, how does that work if you, I mean, our funds would be separate?
Right, so it'd be the same as the Postville Volunteer Fire Department Corporation. You're still subject to, those funds are still pulled in as part of the library's financials though, when we go under audit. They'll ask for the books. Yeah.
But the 501(c)(3) is?
There's no part, yeah.
Sounds like a great idea.
Nothing, they're just letting you know.
Just information.
Not anything.
See, I, I crossed that one out too early. So, I'll go to 11 now, can I? Item 11. It's, uh, 111 East Children, uh, property. And it's, uh, that property is the old Colerick Dental Office, um, that's been setting vacant for quite some time. And we have, um, we have some steps that we can take, the city can, to try to, uh, rectify that. And I think, Darcy, would you fill us on some of those things, what we can do?
Okay, so I gave you some photos in your packet. There's actually two options that you could direct the city attorney to do. Um, one would be considered dangerous building, which basically you're telling them everything that's dilapidated and they have so much time to repair it, or you will issue municipal infractions against the owner. Um, the other is more aggressive and we've used quite a bit this past year. And it is a 657A where the city is basically gonna go in and take the property if it's not brought up to code.
Have you sent him inspections and reports and things during the past, have he made use since he left?
Um, we've, uh, we've dealt with lawn issues and that we've served, um, we've served junk and like that fence deteriorating, but we haven't gone as far as the broken windows and the.
So he might be completely unaware?
He might be, yeah.
Joseph, uh, somebody, Joseph.
It says on beacon, Joseph and Chaya.
Chaya.
Chaya Gertlitsky.
So I guess what the mayor's asking is, what direction do you want? Do you want?
If the dangerous building will take more time, we'll have to send him inspections and reports and wait to see if he does something with that.
And if he doesn't, you would just find him.
Right.
Where the other is a more aggressive way of dealing with it.
But we, we haven't reached out to him before. We haven't given him the opportunity to fix this?
Well, other than the outside and the mowing and.
And did he respond?
Um, I think we did pick up some of the junk and stuff at one time, but the mowing is usually right. You know, continuously, we tell, they mow.
I mean, you know, absentee landowner, he's at least responding and what, he's, he's getting the mail.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
We haven't done, not an inspection or we haven't sent him these pictures until he has to do something.
We have not.
So I mean, it might take longer, but maybe we have to, at least give him an opportunity to correct.
So then you're thinking dangerous building?
At least to begin with. I mean, if we see that, I don't know. We can't get ahold of him or he just wants to be looking at this, then we should get more aggressive.
Sure.
I agree that that's, to me, that's how it should start. You can always upgrade. I don't know that the city really needs to own another property. It's, you know.
Well, it wouldn't be, um, since the comment's been made, the, the city wouldn't own a lawn. It would be up for sale.
Yeah.
In a heartbeat. You know, it's, the thought is, it's just, there's just, there's just too much of this that nothing's been done. And that, that's it. And unless you folks wanna just leave or go, we can let it go. But, yeah. Yes, yes, sure is.
Well, I, if, in my opinion, and I, I don't agree that they should just, you know, walk away and not do anything to their properties, but, um, you, for due process, you know, almost, you gotta give them the, the rightful notice.
And they get a notice with the 657A too. If that's a longer process than you think. We have multiple properties that are in 657A right now.
We do.
Do we have a timeline for the dangerous building action? How long we give him to respond or to fix?
Um, I'm not sure if the code spells out exactly how long, but normally, you know, you'd probably give like thirty, depending on what it is, you'd probably give 30 days.
Well, I, I don't, I don't know if that would ever happen.
But I mean, at least to respond.
Exactly, you bet, yes, yeah.
I mean, does that have a timeline?
Well, that would be whatever you put on the dangerous building notice.
Okay, so it's not, well, it's not written in code then?
I'm just looking at the code right now. I don't think so. I think it's however much time to rectify the nuisance, I should say.
Well, based on the severity, we can shorten that time that he can respond to or whatever.
There's probably steps involved and, and, uh.
As long as he starts on it, you know, it'll respond.
Yeah, sure. Let's see something.
We can shorten the time that we give him to respond at least.
Yeah.
In the same regards, we've had a lot of people start. But we haven't had a lot of people finish.
Right.
You know, that's, that's the flip side to what I just said.
At least we give him the opportunity. And if we see that he's pushing, we can set the timeline.
Right.
If, I mean, Darcy's checking, but if we see that he's just starting, like, six months and does nothing, we can just become more aggressive.
Can we order an inspection inside to give even more detailed report?
That's completely gutted.
It is.
The mayor's been in it.
I've been in it.
I didn't get him to respond. Yeah, I didn't get any.
Oh, you didn't?
No.
Oh, here.
Yeah. Okay, I'm flying blind. My computer does.
Scroll on that, Lori. Scroll on that, Lori.
Also, he didn't want to sell it, you were saying, he was holding up that he might have in his hair picture that it's like in all its form of glory, you know? That looks just as good as it did when he left.
Says here, notice may require the owner or person in charge of the building or premises within 48 hours or such reasonable time as the circumstance requires to repair, improve, or demolish or remove the structure. And all work shall be completed within 90 days from the notice. So that's what it reads.
Exactly, it's a beautiful home.
One of the most beautiful homes in town.
It was.
Yeah.
That sounds like a beautiful museum.
Make a lot of good things.
And it does require us to issue or do not occupy unsafe order.
So we're giving him 48 hours to respond and 90 days. Okay, so I mean, eventually it'll get to the 657 (22). But at least we can just say we gave him the opportunity to respond.
So we need a motion.
So how do you do 48 hours?
48 hours to respond.
I know, but so they live in Florida?
We do certify. And it'd be from the timely get return receipt.
So, Devore, you gonna make that motion?
Oh, yeah, I, so.
Is there a second?
One second.
Lori, any further discussion? Not all of them in favor say aye. Say no, okay. We'll get that one going. Okay, that takes us to item 12, Homes for Iowa.
Is this one that doesn't make?
Yep. That's the one, you get it?
Yeah. Like I said, it's a shame, it's a beautiful place.
Yeah.
All right.
Could have been, yeah.
This is your baby. Homes for Iowa?
Yeah, so Homes for Iowa. So for you folks out there, we, the city owns a lot on, where's that?
West Stoneman.
What's that?
West Stoneman.
West, West Stoneman. And there was a house on there and that was taken down, an old rent shack house taken down. So we tried several times to sell the lot, you know, for not much money at all, you know, for somebody just going there and build a house. So, this is my way of thinking. And you do whatever you want with that one. But I'm thinking that why don't we, the city, go in there and it's a, it's a narrow lot, you know, there isn't a lot of room. So you've got to kind of fit this house into this lot. And if we were thinking about the Homes for Iowa, which is built by the prisoners, where. And, and then, and then sell it. Put this house on this lot, sell it, get it back on the tax rolls. Because right now, we own a lot where if you look at the taxes raised on that lot is zero. Yeah, so. And besides that, we all need housing, right?
Well, and they're decent living houses, you know.
No, no. No, no. These are, these are very high quality homes. And Rochelle Howell is through Upper Explorer Land is our goal in between here. And honestly, from what I've read from her thing today, it may not get done, you know, this year anymore, but we could be first in line for next year if we, you know, if we proceed with this, so, yeah.
Will we ask for sale or for sale?
We have to put it up for sale first. And then we've got so much time. And if that doesn't work out, then we can, then we can rent.
Now, do water lines and sewer lines that go in that lot already?
Yeah, they're capped, they're capped at the curb. We took that house in a 657(a) and we, when we demoed, we made it so it was a buildable lot.
So we wouldn't have to spend more money on doing that?
No, other than hooking in the service lines.
Do they have basements or would they be on a kind of?
That would be an option, either or.
Whatever.
I have a picture of the one that just went in more common. This is on Main Street in Moreton. Yep, but it's a narrow lot. And they did put, they did put a driveway and, but yeah.
Did they do a basement?
That one does have a basement, right?
No.
No, I don't think so, it looks like a slab.
Just a crawl space.
Okay, I knew it while I seen observation.
Right, we're gonna sell it.
Yeah, we're gonna sell it.
It'll be for sale, boss. The program lets you rent.
Yeah, I see here now in the, in Rochelle's letter this morning that you put it up for sale first. And if it's not sold within 90 days, then you can fill out a waiver and then rent it. So, yeah. So you have the option.
Is that the same thing that when the other new house is going up?
Jeff Allison? That is what's going on, yeah.
That's going to be one of these ones?
Yeah.
But we obviously haven't decided on which of those houses we're putting there to figure out the cost that we have.
Right.
What the profit would be in there.
Yep. I'm thinking this is more or less like a conversation, you know, and then.
Something you're interested in.
Yeah, if you're, if you're interested, if not, we'll drop her.
There's a lot of benefits. Well, we have a lot of people here tonight who feel strongly that we need some more.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we should go ahead with it. Kind of charge a handle.
So, yeah, I mean, it doesn't hurt anything to say we're gonna go ahead with it. Because we, you know, we got a lot of things to look at. We got to look at design, bedrooms, all of that stuff, you know, so. But if you folks think we can, should go ahead with it, we'll get Rochelle out. You want that in a motion or just?
Up to you, whatever.
I think a motion makes it really clean. So if you, somebody would like to do something about that, they can do that.
I will pursue this Home for Iowa house.
Right, is that good enough?
Yeah.
All right, second?
I'll second.
Lori, any further discussion? Not all of them in favor say aye. Say no, Jerry, all right. That takes us then to item 13, the consent agenda. Delighted, Mary, would you like?
Okay, I just, in July, you are always to look at your water rates. It says that in the code and I totally forgot. So I gave you your current rates and just drafted a 1% like you've been doing. But you'll be looking at that in August. So I just wanted to leave that out for you so that I wouldn't forget to tell you. And then you do not have the sewer operators' report yet, but you will have that for next month, he's been out, yeah, so.
Are these the same?
No, 1% is what I did.
Okay. So I did a, you guys already got my June report for the community developer position, but I did, oh, you get one now because no one else is here. I did sort of a summative report of what I accomplished in my time in a position. Several pages long, I will not go over detail with you. I just thought it would be a useful document to have for when I hopefully hire the next community developer. So that way it sort of acted as a bridge for them to see, you know, what we did, what maybe isn't complete, but still is getting worked on. So there's a lot of stuff on here. And this is not a complete list by any means of everything I've done over the nine, the last nine months. And at the end, again, I wanted to emphasize, this was not a full-time position, not even close. So I added up all of my hours. I worked 283.5 hours and I divided by that, but divided that by 40 hours, a typical work week. So this would be about seven weeks in equivalent time that I did all these things. So I just wanted you to have some perspective upon.
Set the bar reading high.
What we did. Yeah, and then I want to discuss a concern that I have. Last Monday, with no notice or any sort of forewarning, Darcy asked me for my password to a personal email account. I do understand that anything I did in that account regarding community development needs to be available for Iowa Code Chapter 22 for a public records request. I have zero problem with that. But nowhere in that code does it say that anyone needs to provide a password for a private email account, which is what it is. It was an account started by Felicia as she was not provided an email account. I have used that account extensively over the past two and a half years. I have people who have emailed me about things ranging from immigration status to sexual assault in this community. And I am not going to share that information and break the trust of our community. Now, I am owed, you are owed, information about community development, which is not relevant to those personal issues. So I have an idea, which I believe meets the nature of the code and allows me to protect the residents in our community. So the heart and soul work is all in that account, which is already shared. Darcy, the mayor, the whole heart and soul team, Mary, everybody has access to that, it's already there. I have already created a public share, or not public, I've already created a drive folder in there that I can share with Darcy, the mayor, whoever wants it, the whole city council, or I can dump any files in there that were from the community development position from, that would be October through June. The emails is the pain in the butt because I have 4,500 of them. And most of them are not related to this job, quite honestly. I want whoever does this job next to have that information. So I am happy to send those emails on. Couple ideas, one, the city could create a new email account that's like post comm dev, which I actually even asked if I should do when I started this position and was not given any direction on. So they, you could start a, your own, it could be Google or it could be anything, but an account for that, for that position. I could forward all those emails to that account and then you would obviously have all that information. Or I could just forward them to Darcy's regular email, but I don't know if that would be very fun for her. So I am just waiting for direction on what you guys would like me to do. And I really wish there had been some communication sooner. I cannot use that email account if other people are wanting to have the password because that takes away the confidentiality of our community. If this was something we were planning on doing, it should have been told to me when I gave notice in April, not sprung on me after I gave my final report. And it's been incredibly upsetting and a very frustrating thing to go through for this past week, so. That's where I'm at. Oh, I also think like, some time to do that would be, you know, like a month would be nice for me to forward 4,000, you know, however many thousands of emails I need to send on so the public records request can be made. It's a lot to go through.
Was anything about the email in the contract?
No, there's nothing in my contract about that email account period.
So the email account was actually established by the city when Felicia started as the community.
She created it.
Under the city of Postville because Brock helped her do it on the city laptop.
It's a Google account, she doesn't know.
But, you know, the cards that were around town, it's a community developer in that email. So, you know, and looking at it, how are we going to continue the community development? If somebody needs something from the community developer and it's coming in there, how is the city gonna check that or?
Oh, well, I'm not, I, so I guess I'm confused. I don't know why you would want someone else to use that account because I'd like to continue using it. I don't want to share it. I think you should create a new account and you should actually tell your community developer that that is an account they would not be able to keep. And if they left the position, then explain to them Chapter 22, not after the fact. I think we should create a new account for that position. I've gotten rid of those business cards. I have taken, you can see my signature in emails I've sent since. It does not say community developer. It doesn't say community developer in the email. That is an email address that people throughout our community, surrounding our community, throughout the country, email me about our community. If we get rid of that account or if we just give it to the next person, they're not emailing that person, they're emailing me. They're giving me, they're giving me information about, hey, we've got some grants for meeting people. Hey, we've got a free pantry, free clothes and decor for folks, can you please share that? They're not looking to that account to get a community developer who's working with local business. They're looking to that account to give support for our community.
So you would forward any emails that do have to do with the community development to get, say, the new account?
Wherever you want me to. Everything related to community development, I have no, you guys know what I did too. There's no secrets there, I gave the reports every month. Anything related to community development, I have no problem sharing. I have a problem with destroying something that we've spent years creating. This is a place that people email for support and help. And if someone else is going to have the password, they're not going to do it anymore and I'm not going to use it anymore. So we're going to be destroying something that we've spent time building. If I'm meeting Chapter 22, Iowa Code, by providing all the information that you might need for a public records request that you have not received, I don't see what the problem is.
It'll take a long time to begin. What is the account listed as right now? I mean, how does it, how does your email read?
It's our Postville CHS. It's the community heart and soul account, essentially. I specifically asked when I started in October if I should create a new email account for the community development position. I was not given any sort of direction either way. I had thoughts that I should get a new account because it's, it's the new job. But then I realized, everybody already knows me. Everyone's just going to keep emailing this account. Why would I create yet another email account when everyone already knows me, already connected? And I was not given any direction from the city. Nor was I told that any of these emails would be subject to a Chapter 22 request. I know that now, I mean, I guess we can all say I should have known, but why would I know what I don't know?
So on behalf of who, we request the password?
I requested the password because those, that password, or that email was created under the community heart and soul, which was the taxpayers' when we established that. And she was using it as community developer. So when things were turned in, I said I needed the passwords. And when she was in here and saying she resigned, she said she would turn over all the passwords and everything.
I said I'd give you the passwords to the Zoom account, not the email.
You said I would turn over all the passwords. So I just asked for the password and she said she wasn't turning it over, so. And I basically just said why we needed it, but there's been no conversation since.
So could we fulfill the same thing with the taxpayer dollars or whatever by just making a new community developer?
Well, I think what we need, though, is every, all the work that was done under the community developer and actually the heart and soul, because that was also the taxpayers' dollars, needs to be saved to a thumb drive or something so that we have it.
No problem. And most of us already shared with you. You tell me how you want that data and I will get it to you.
But it's, I mean, it's up to the council with this email situation, so it's not my call.
If that original email was created by someone working under the guidance of the city, is there a way you can, this probably isn't even going to help, but I mean, can you go in and take your private things out just as easy as you would have taken the city things out?
That's something you could do, but the thing that is very frustrating to me is the loss of that account because that is a brand that we have built and an identity and a way that people outside of our community reach us. So, yeah, I can go and create a new account and make sure that nobody's personal information is there. There's also a ton of exemptions to Chapter 22 personal, to those things. Anything like notes or drafts, personal communications. A citizen would be discouraged by disclosing things if that was shared. Housing assistance info, I have documents in there that are not even owned by me, that are owned by colleges because I've helped them do interviews. So there's a lot of exemptions, none of that was told to me, I had to figure that out by myself. And nowhere in that code does it say that a password has to be given up. It says any information that we use, subject to public records requests, needs to be submitted. And I'm telling you, I will do that, however you want it.
The problem is if Crystal takes out all the emails that's in, sends it to that new account. I, that's fine, but the problem is people are going to be still emailing her.
Right, so is whoever's now using that account going to be the one to tell people where to go eat when they come to town? Is someone else going to take over all these services that I help get to our community? Because you'd be sabotaging that.
What is your, what is your idea? What do you think it should be?
I think that we need to meet our legal requirements. And I would just love to be able to give you everything that you want that is legally required. So it's, I already, it's really easy to share a drive on Google. I've already dumped things in it that says community development. That's easy. It's the emails that there's 4,000 of. I don't see any other easier way besides forwarding. I would go back to October 2024 presumably and go through all those emails, every single one, and make sure I forward everything that's applicable to. I would go back to, uh, October twenty twenty-four presumably and go through all those emails, every single one, and make sure I forward everything that's applicable to community development. I would forward that wherever you want. If I was Darcy, I sure as heck wouldn't want it in my regular inbox, but, um, I think a new account would be easy. And then you would have that set up for your new community developer and they would have all that information already. They would have the contacts, they would have, um, you know, and then you maintain the password. Obviously, you still have to give it to the employee, but you need to have in your contract that stated, you know. I've never expected to keep an email in any other job, because typically, if I'm a city employee, I'm gonna have a next tell email, like everyone that's a city employee. When I worked at Seat Savers, I didn't think I'd get to keep my email, because it was a Seat Savers email. This was an email set up by Felicia. She told me, because we talked, that she wasn't provided an email address, so she set this one up. It isn't owned by the city, it's a Google account, it's a free account. No one had a problem with me using it from July through September, when I was doing all this work for free. It wasn't brought up until I gave my notice.
The, the email that I sent after that postal connection, I mean council connection, that I was willing to go to the library or whatever, so I made one. I forget what it was called, postal council connect or something. So I made that it had postal's name on it and I'm a council member. But that was like a private email, like I wouldn't be required to give the password for that, right, even when people.
Well, but we, I mean. I mean, you weren't doing in the capacity of the city though, were you, or?
Well, I was doing it in the capacity as a council member.
Right.
Like, I mean, we gave them an email, an option of a way to, um, communicate with me or to bring things up to the city or whatever it was. And a, a couple of people from those, those apartments, whatever.
Okay.
She had contacted me through that. So, but that was a private, I guess privately set up or whatever, it was just a way. But I mean, like in that case, would I be required to? To give the password?
Have you asked all your other independent contractors that you hired for their personal email passwords and access to their emails?
I think the confusion is, is this was set up under the city. So we established that email, uh, when we started Community Heart Soul. And then we just passed that on when we advanced it into the community developer. So that's, I mean, that's all new territory for all of us. I was just told by the city attorney that all that stuff needed to be turned in.
I will turn it all in, I have no problem.
An easy solution for that is to actually print those emails out as PDF.
Okay.
You have them as a, on a thumb drive, a disc, however you want, so there'll actually be a file for you.
Oh, you don't mean like print this, you mean like?
Print PDF.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it, it will be a file, you, it'll be searchable, so it'd be the easiest way to transfer that.
Okay. And I think that was one of the suggestions that I said, like with the heart and soul stuff, that it all should be put into a thumb drive, yeah. I guess it's up to the council and how they want to proceed with this.
Well, I mean, you have so much valuable information for the next person. And she, and the next person probably doesn't want to know where to eat when they come to Postville. You know, I mean, and all these other things that, I mean, you know, these other things that might be on there. So I think we should, this is recommendation, important thing instead of like community development.
I think people also associate probably the email with you personally.
Yes.
So it might be a nice idea for the next community developer to make a unique one, right?
I have no intention of representing myself as an employee of the city.
And the heart and soul thing is done.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if the, if the original email was designed by this other, yes, Felicia. Um, and it was under the assumption, I guess is the word, that it was unique to the Heart and Soul project. It got title waved into obviously much more. And you don't really probably have a way to distinguish heart and soul from your stuff.
Data wise, I do.
Does it kind of combine?
No, it's organized, data wise, I absolutely do. And you should have both, you should have all the heart and soul information.
But hear me out, hear me out. So what I'm seeing is, if, what this gentleman's, you know, thing was, if you could, this is just me and I, God knows, I'm not computer literate, so. Is there a way to like take and gut out the heart and soul, gut out the community developer? And then, if, since heart and soul is done. To part companies on an equal manner, just leave the email as is, since it wasn't just a Google address. Create a new account specifically for this community developer's position with some guidance, now that we are aware of it. Um, so to not deprive her of all the benefits that that email probably is, is giving, um, and she's getting back to them. But we would have all of our things segregated out and then start anew. That's my opinion. I, again, I'm a computer ding dong, so I can't get this to work.
That's what you're saying.
Yeah, the files, so.
But if it's that simple, is what I'm getting.
Well, it's not, it's.
Yeah, and I get that, but.
So there's two, two, and two things we're kind of talking about when you have a Google account and there's a lot of things in Google. But what I'm specifically talking about, where there is data that is relevant, there's a Google Drive. And that is where there is a folder that has heart and soul that's already shared and they don't think anything needs to be done, because everyone already has access. I can create a folder, I have created a folder that says community developer. And I can dump everything into that folder that was related to this job from October to June. And I can share that folder with Darcy, I can, I can share that folder with Ron, I can share it with whoever you want. Um, and if you want, and I can even change ownership of that data, like if Darcy wants, if you guys want it and you don't want me to have it, like, fine, I, you know, I don't need it. Um, and then the emails, that's the thing that's a little bit more tangential to me. But I don't think it would be too bad to go from October to June and just send every relevant email. Then you tell me when you want me to send it.
Yes, we will.
Don't.
We support Krista, because she got the trust of the community. There is a lot of information that is sharing, is given to her, a lot of health that the community has been receiving, my share. So I am sure they have to read the easy way to do this. If you need to go over the, 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 so let's go to look for the more easy way. She really is doing wonderful job and the community really recognizes.
Well, that's right, I was saying if there was a way to, if heart and soul is in, has it's done and that.
Yeah, it's because too many immigrant communities, ninety percent in this community is immigrant. And she received too many confidentiality emails. That email is for female. That email is not for the city. I think some of my suggestion is for next time when you parent another person, do a CD, CD email, no personal email. But I want to say thank you to her, because she's a part of us all the time. She's working together with community action and she's working together for this community. That doesn't matter with this white people, Somali people, this diversity community. And if she's a part of us, why we not support her?
Sure.
Thank you.
So that's my suggestion, so like I said, if there's a clean, easy way to.
PDF.
Maybe it can leave, leave her with that actual email address.
Can I have like a month? I don't know that it'll take that long, but, or two weeks, I don't care, give me, give me guidance, I will follow it, you will have everything.
Um, I, I personally have no issue with giving at a good time, that's thirty days.
I mean, you're gonna have to drive stuff tomorrow, all I have to do is share it, the emails take time.
Right.
I would say thirty days, some like a month. Thirty and four thousand.
And not thirty business, thirty days.
Yeah.
I've got, she's got your directions.
Okay.
Okay, so we're still consent agenda. Anything else on that, or is there a motion to accept?
That's my recommendation would be to create a, a new one that would be for the community developer.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that, because I know the first time I broke her from NICC, I was a working therapist. And I knew it was work and I didn't want to, like, for first time we found it. But I, it was, the address was confusing for me.
Yeah.
And so I just want to make sure about that, so, thank you.
We should make a note also to put something about the email address in the next contract of the position.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, at least from the NICC. Be helpful when we're corresponding with us, we saw classes or such, so.
Right, how we doing?
What do we?
Well.
I'm sorry, kind of got lost in the conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
Alright, so second? Mary? All those in favor say aye? Alright, now we go to item fourteen, uh, resolution for money to pay the claims. Motion for that?
And will we pay the claims?
Alright. Darcy?
Meyer? It's Moody. That's Inkstrom? Yes.
Thanks, pay bills. Okay, public comment, one more time, come on up, Bob.
Happy, I think the city needs to clear the air on this deal about this wastewater thing. And that we're paying. We should put it on the agenda for next month's meeting.
Well, okay, but.
You told me before when.
Yeah, you bet, you bet, but I, I just got. We're actually gonna have this thing, it's gonna be done within, within the next year.
Yeah. We have paid copious amounts of money to those people and they, excuse my language, but they shit on the city. They discharged wastewater into our sewer plant and then they said it was, uh, sabotaged. For me, that's enough to get out of that agreement. And I think these people deserve to know what's happening. That's why I would say you should put it on the agenda, so all of this stuff comes out of it. That's my suggestion for next month. Do you think you can do that?
It's on the agenda.
Okay, for next month?
Yeah, you bet. I don't know what you want to, what, what, what do you want to learn out of that, Bob?
I think these people should know.
But this is something that was done a long, long time ago. It, it just didn't happen yesterday.
No, I realize that, but I know for a fact, every city council or every elected body, they don't have to honor agreements that were done before, they can be changed.
Well, we found out from the city attorney that we can't, we can't hold or whatever, right? Something previous.
That's alright, we'll, we'll, sure, I'll bring it up, it'll be on, but I, I don't.
Because you need to know who owns the property.
Okay.
Thank you.
You bet, I need to shut up. I, I got, next is mayor's report, I got non-council, you guys got any, oh, I'm sorry.
Um, I have a last statement, but I was gonna talk to you guys about, uh, my name's Sean Duffy. I am a business owner, graphic designer and a landlord in California. Um, just so you know, in regards to ordinances or something like that, um, I know that some of the things have been thrown around. What has been proposed is actually very light. In California, I have to have my property inspected once a year and I pick that. So the money doesn't come out of the city, it comes out of the landlord. So something you might want to think about when moving forward. Um, I've come to this meeting to remind you all of what you signed up for when, uh, when you, the council were elected, uh, to positions. You were voted as representative of people. You were not elected for your opinions, your world views, your visions of what Postville should be. You were elected to be the voice of the people. Giving them a say-so in the decisions that impact their lives, their safety, their well-being and their needs. You are solution finders, not naysayers or gamekeepers. You are representatives of all the people. In being representatives, you should know what people want. What the people and what they need. This town was engaged in a process called Heart and Soul. To find out what, what is in the hearts and souls and minds of your community. So when the people come to, come to you and ask the council to provide solutions and of issues in regards to safety, education, community events, welcoming, diversity. Voluntarism and leadership and local businesses, those signs that are on your building. You, the council, should advocate for those people. Find solutions, provided they are within your power and within the budget. If it's neither of those things, you should be willing to reach out and find other solutions. And not be an obstacle. City clerk and administrator is here to be a public official who manages the city official records, coordinates city council meetings, ensures transparency, complies with the laws and regulations. And suggests solutions to solve issues the council decides to take upon, take upon themselves. You are to act as a liaison between the public and city government. The city clerk and administrator does not set or decide policy. The city government body was created of the people, by the people.
Anybody else? Counsel? Any comments? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All those in favor say aye. So say no. Alright, we're out of here, thanks everybody.